Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Share your mission statement, please. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide equal education and empower students to be successful in a global community. Thank you. Sherry Rokold. Here. Angela. Here. Ty.
Here.
James is absent with notice. Danielle.
Here.
Margaret is absent with notice, and I'm present. Whitmore.
Thank you. We're going to do approval of agenda, but first I need to make two changes on it. We will be removing presentation item C, and we'll also then be removing the action item E. So I need a motion for approval of the corrected agenda.
I motion to approve the corrected agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Oh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carries.
Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I motion to approve this consent agenda. Second.
Any, any discussion, Mr. Williamsley?
Yes, at the last board meeting, we hired Jill Gabberts for a special deposition. Actually, that night before we hired her, she resigned from the position before it even started, so we have one resignation. And then finally, Janelle Mueller will be retiring as a special education paraprofessional in the aspect of this Thursday, March 31st. We wish her well. There were no corrections that were brought to my attention on the 314-2240.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Okay, at this time, we will have our first presentation regarding our wrestling Division III state champion with Mr. Reiner.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to present the Richmond High School State Champions for the Winter Athletics Season Two tonight. It was another successful season for the wrestling program. The season finished with five student athletes that were able to bring home medals at all state honors from the individual state tournament held at Fort Field on March 5th. Kevin McCurnan, standing to my left, ended his season with a win and a Division III state title at 171 pounds. And here's a fun fact for you. All five of the McCurnan boys wrestled for an opportunity at an individual state championship while wrestling in high school. That is a pretty incredible accomplishment. Congratulations, Kevin. Want to have everyone come up and... And I would like to also give recognition to his coaches. First, the head coach of our wrestling program, Brandon Day. And our assistant head coach of the wrestling program, Coach Preston Trent.
Our next presentation will be the cheerleaders, so we're just going to stand here. It's yours, Mr. Reinhardt.
Alrighty, this is the fourth year in a row that I've had the opportunity to present the cheer team to the board. This season, the team finished with a clean sweep, earning a league championship, a district, regional, and state championship. Not only did they earn victories during the MHSA tournament, but they were victorious in all of their competitions this season. The team was also recognized as academic all-state honorable mention selection with a team GPA of 3.46. The team earned several individual accolades for their season as well. So girls, I'm going to announce your name, and please come on up. Jenna Alexander. Ella Allen. Addison Anthony. Riley Bartoloni. Alyssa DeBlau. Gracie Ellis. Calliani Hall. Erin Hart. Hannah Giroux. Savannah Crivney. Adeline Loftus. Annabelle Loftus. Esther Lupicolo. Josie McIntyre. Mariah Melly. Sarah Michalasek. Cameron Moore. Anna Moskwa. Ava Moskwa. Nicole Ostaszewski. McKenna Parker. Isabel Raiz. Addison Roberts. Sydney Sandow. Faith Thompson. Adelaine Yake. And now for the head coach of our competitive cheer program for Richmond Community Schools, Coach Kelly Mavis. Congratulations, ladies. Thank you.
I don't think you want a bunch of teenagers saying that. Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt, your next topic agenda again with our athletic presentation.
I'm going to begin with the helmet piece. Each year, all of the used football helmets are reconditioned. They're checked for cracks or damages, repainted, and new hardware is installed. This is done to make sure that helmets are safe to be used again in the following season. In December, when our helmets were to be picked up, I was told that Rawlings helmets could no longer be reconditioned. Rawlings went out of business in 2015, but reconditioning companies had still been able to find parts. This is no longer the case. Even though the lifespan of helmets are 10 years, this was not completed on these helmets because we were unable to recondition them. There was no warning given. I found out that we would lose these helmets in December. Knowing that we must have more helmets to field teams, I requested quotes from well-known companies for the needed helmets. I received a quote from SHUT, Rydell, and Zenith. This season, the high school football program saw a growth in participation numbers as well. The high school program with JV and varsity dressed 68 student athletes. The middle school program had 26 on their roster. As of today, we have a total of 36 helmets at the high school level and 33 helmets at the middle school level. A purchase of helmets is necessary to allow student athletes to participate again in the fall.
Any questions? When we did the budget amendment, we added dollars for, with this anticipated purchase this year, so that we could have helmets in time for all, for the August when they start practicing. In your information, I believe it was at the end of January meeting, there was a question regarding the inventories. Mr. Reinhardt sent me that sheet yesterday, so I put it and uploaded to the website today regarding what he just talked about, the 36 helmets and the 33 helmets that they missed.
So Chris, how many kids do we have at the high school? You said, can we...
This season, we had 68 for the JV and the varsity.
Okay.
We were pretty close to adding a freshman team.
And then the middle school has how many?
We had, this year, we had 26.
We're looking at about 40 helmets.
That's why I was trying to figure out how many are we looking to purchase.
Extra in case we have more kids come in, that would be horrible.
How long do they last for?
10 years.
Assuming there's no damage, it's 10 years after the...
So is the same company that you purchased some of them reconditioning?
No. There are, there are different companies throughout the United States that we condition them. The company that we use actually uses SHUT, but they're not, that's, they work with companies in order to replace any helmets that are damaged, so that they are able to fulfill your order to make sure you have enough helmets for the season.
Are we going to try to cycle a little, we're not buying 40 at once, maybe again? Or maybe by five a year?
Well, we usually do. So they pull some off, and they add new helmets within the reconditioning bill.
Part of it was the parts issue. We couldn't get parts for them, so those helmets we can't. They may have, correct me if I'm wrong, they may have life expectancy, but we don't have any parts.
But we don't, there's no parts. They do have...
And with this new purchase going forward, the reconditioning company will have the parts replaced?
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions from the board on that topic? I think we have you again with sports and projections.
So Chris Reinhardt.
Yes, go ahead.
So this also came out of a similar board meeting, the question of what does it cost to run sports? So Mr. Ryan Eric, you have other coaches to get together information for you in your packet. There's several documents that are related to each sport, so Mr. Ryan Eric, have a few.
So as Ryan stated, we, him and I sat down and we created a spreadsheet that included all of our district sponsored sports. Within this spreadsheet was the cost of equipment, uniforms, medical supplies, tournaments, and anything that each family would have to provide for their student athlete to participate. All of the varsity coaches within the district were contacted and asked to provide the information for all levels in their program. The coaches provided information on what they need to run the sport. Some of the items provided are not needed year to year. From this document, a summary of all the sports was created, and within this information, you can see the total cost of what it takes to build an athletic program from the ground up.
So in your document there, as Chris mentioned, you'll see by sport, the different categories. What is not included in this cost is the salary of the coaches, as well as the fees we pay for referees, and any other incidental costs associated, like Mr. Reinhardt's part salary, any secretary of costs. In the equipment, as Mr. Reinhardt said, there are some of those items that are yearly purchases, and there are some that would be a one-time purchase until the equipment either, the individual lake, backseat brakes, et cetera. One of the questions that came out, I believe it came from Margaret, was regarding uniforms. And so we totaled what currently is being collected. We do not pay for a uniform, so that is fundraised. So when you look at the total cost, which is the very first sheet in your board packet, the total cost of uniforms is about $136,500 by all the sports teams. If this is something that the board wants to invest or put on a replenishing schedule, just to give you a ballpark number, if you did a five-year rotation, it would be about $27,000, $30,000 a year you'd have to allocate for uniforms. If, if you wanted to just provide uniforms to teams and not have that be a fundraiser or parent-sponsored activity. Medical supplies and some of that equipment that Mr. Reinhardt mentioned can be purchased out of the supply budget for athletics, but as, I believe it was at that meeting, that supply budget nowhere covers the cost. So many of our sports teams purchase their own balls, bats, basic supplies, stuff that they need every year. Athletic, medical supplies, we have a partnership with Richmond Lennox EMS. They're supposed to take their bags over there, replenish them, and they just bill us pretty much at cost of materials, which is a great service. Tournament fees, when you get to that section, there is 10,000, there's some tournament fees about. The total cost of tournament fees is 11. Now that might be tournaments that could run, so based on what the coaches provide us, it'd be about 11,000, but we don't spend that every year, tournament fees. And then there are some other categories like other, which might be a unique item just for that specific sport. So I guess as we begin the budget process after spring break, we will be looking for direction from the board. If this is something that you want to entertain, reducing the cost or burden for the parent, I would just caution the board, particularly in uniform, what this doesn't, this is athletics. This doesn't address band, choir, and all the other uniforms that other programs do in our district, so.
And in this plan, is this, the uniforms will be handed back down every year to the next team, or they'll be walking out the door?
This, if, this is just, here's what it costs. If the board wants to get involved and do uniforms, then we would have to develop a plan and more of a structure for collecting them. At what point do they go down to the next JV freshman, if the size is even applicable to any of the sport? But we'd have to do some type of plans that we have the accountability of those uniforms. Right now, it depends on the sport. Some sports, they just work for the season. Bowling's probably a good example of that. There's where the bowling's starting, they take, it's kind of souvenir people for the season, probably not the best choice of word, but I could think of, but where football, they do typically use them for a couple of years.
Do they put their names on it, correct?
I believe...
Yeah, they're, they're nameplates. They're nameplates that you can check on.
So this is a surprise to ask currently how every sport or athletic system uses their uniforms and whatever language they vary from.
And we did add, when you look at each individual sport, we added a line, okay, if it was reused or replaced, about how many years could you get out of that uniform? Again, we were relying on the coach of that, that team or that sport to get us this information. So it's really what we're here providing is information, it is a lot. Our parents do a lot of fundraising, our teams do a lot of fundraising, and you see this is the cost. When you slip a uniform, you know, if they bought uniforms every year, they raised it $136,000. Now like, bug raising just to get uniforms, so.
Chris, what's your current budget? And I know it doesn't include, but we don't buy uniforms. So your current budget just buys what?
It buys basketballs, slip balls, verbal sports, if the coaches request.
If they request. There's not an automatic, if you block it, if you request it, the program.
Look, things like mat cape every couple of years, but athletic department, things that we need in the athletic department as well, letters, certificates, things of that nature as well.
I have a question. On the page for track, it says electronic tagging system. Has that ever been bought in there?
It is.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, they have it.
Okay, good. Because my son was in it about four years ago. It was just a hand, didn't they?
Yep. Not anymore.
It is, in the new field, we put the underground electric ones, they bug raise the field. But there's like, that's a good example. One of these, I think it's track, they talk about a tent somewhere, one of those, a tent. You know, that, that lasts only as long as the weather's going to withstand it, so that might be something that's absolutely long-term.
Would you be looking for direction from us, Mavis?
After spring break, I sat down with, the plan is similar to what we've done in the past, like come with projections, enrollment, what we know, and start making those assumptions, that we start building our budget. Any increases to the budget that we know of, for instance, we know the heart cap's going up about minus 2%. So we're going to have an increase in our, our healthcare costs for employees. So as we start knowing, that will be after spring break. In the past, we've tried to stay focused, okay, from the classroom, work our way out for all the incidentals. So if we stay on that model, as we work our way out, and if there are funds left, then you can decide as a board where you want to allocate those additional value. I know we've had, you had conversations about increasing art and music, which we've done that in the last one, but that's where we have these, these other areas that we have really never, in a very long time, been able to put more money into, gives you that opportunity. My concern with the budget going into next year, at the last County School Board Association, we know what the governor's budget is, and if the governor's budget holds true, it's a lot of revenue for Richmond schools. But there's also a report that the Senate and the House budget may not even be released till the end of April or May, which is going to put us really, tight timeline to get the budget approved in, like, June 30th. We may have to make a lot of assumptions and come back like we did the last couple of years in August to reset it, once we know a better idea. I'm not optimistic, we're not going to know in April, I think it'll be closer to May. And I would, it wouldn't surprise me if we don't have a approved budget by the end of June, when they're supposed to.
Does anybody have more questions for Mr. Reinhardt? So if we voted for some of this stuff, like if you got the new timer and that lasts five, 10, 15, 18 years, we would need to spend all this money, so you would ask the coaches to figure out what the essential immediate needs were? Is that...
So you look at the, if you look at the equipment, it totals about $318,000. Of that equipment, we would identify what stuff that is a yearly expense, and we have, that's the one thing we did not delineate when we created this, was what is every year and what is equipment you need that's going to last for years. So again, even if you just, and I just did rough numbers, a fifth of that cost, knowing that at some point that those larger ticket items are going to need to be replaced, and they're useful, you're talking about $63,000, just in that range. But that will be our next step. If you want to invest in, in more of the supply dollars, if the board wants to allocate by sport, a supply dollar, this will give you an idea by sport, what it costs, you know, when you look at, you know, this is a brand, they have bowling on here, there's really no equipment, but you flip all the way back to football, there's a large investment on the equipment that's needed. So you can't just say everybody's going to get $200, because it's, each sport is very different in what they're costing. I mean, you could say it, but it would be...
Any other comments or questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, for putting all the summers together for us. Next, I got my agenda is the bottom of the table.
Very short. You've been behind the middle school. They have begun the demolition of the fencing and the, started to work on the field, started with a Drea Child with a new softball field, varsity softball field. In May, we will start the back parking lot behind the auditorium, so the staff will move into the front, so we can get that, start that done, because we'll need that parking lot for summer camps and programs that will run the trail to student parking. Other than that, there's still, I'll have to go ahead.
Thank you. Public comments. Since the last meeting, I have received no emails from the public. Any member of the public may address the board at this time. Please sign in and state your name. You'll have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments? Okay. Being no public comments, we're moving on to superintendent and legislative update.
Okay, I will start with the elementary school. Students have been enjoying mystery readers throughout the month of March. Mr. Koche, who retired principal at Lee, was recently there, and a set of board members have, have read, so it's been an exciting time to motivate students to read more. Teachers at Lee have been using some data protocols for their winter NW8 assessments to drive instruction that's needed for the, where the areas of students are left, or are not proficient issues. Title of a parent meeting was tonight, or the family engagement night, look at this era, she was there. It looked like a packed turnout, I never got over there, but they had, how many actually were RSVP?
We, we had 150 RSVP, and then we also had 29 volunteers. So around, definitely over 100 people were in attendance this evening, and it was just amazing to see, so it was really a great event.
The, Lee just did their monthly moral focus assembly. This one was on self-control as past. Right. Middle school, we have done the first round of scheduling for the middle school. We are in the second round at the high school, so we'll be narrowing down the student selections. Band students are being fitted for instruments next year. The science Olympia team competed last week. I did not know how they came in, I did not get a response, so anybody knows, very interesting. And geography B is next week. At the high school, Mr. Castle reports, the interact club had the spring break, Spirit Week theme, next week is spring break. The high school staff has been distributed PSAT and SAT study guides for students. The National Honor Society induction dinner is tomorrow, March 29th. Robotics is... Robotics is competing this Friday and Saturday, April 1st and 2nd. Blue Devil Cafe had a successful opening on March 17th and 18th, it was a soft opening. And last weekend was a soft opening for district employees. 17th was for high school, and 18th became district-wide. We will be open to the public beginning April 28th, on Thursdays and Fridays, from 11:00 to 1:00. We have a newspaper ad that we're in the process of developing to get it marketed, and it'll also go in our communicator, which is scheduled to go out, ready for spring break, to all the families. On April 21st and 22nd, and April 26th, we have invitations to various organizations throughout our community to have them come, experience the new level cafe, so they can also help promote it. Rotarys, city councils, township boards, et cetera, will all be invited. This area, you want to talk about curriculum numbers and tennis, this is pretty exciting.
Yeah, I have some great news to share. One of our district goals was to decrease our absenteeism rate, and I've been meeting with the deans during our meetings, and we've created a plan with tiers of support for students. And you may have seen some proactive tier-one attendance posts on Facebook, but we have established attendance teams at the district level and at each of the buildings. Thanks for our efforts, in just two months, we have already seen a great impact. Lee Elementary saw a reduction of 346 total absences from just December to February. RHS saw a reduction of 392 total absences, and Richmond Middle School saw a reduction of 466 total absences, with a total district reduction of 1,204 absences, which equilates to 373,240 instructional minutes. So that's great news, so thanks to everybody who's been working on that. Last year, side note, last year, we had 21 students leaving Richmond to attend CTE courses at other locations, such as New Haven and PanCal. And as Mr. Wamsley just indicated, we're doing our current tallies for the course selections for next year. With the addition of our new CTE courses, we have been able to successfully keep all students at Richmond for the '22, '23 school year.
That's, that's a huge savings for an FTE that we are building programs and being able to serve in the house, so put those to the board, and everybody's made those decisions to build these programs. Transportation department, the director, Suzie, reports, we want to give a shout out to Tim, Megan, and Dave. Oftentimes, when our, our drivers are done with their run, they may either have, they don't have something to go to, because we don't only have the one bus run, but they were able to help New Haven and actually transport them on their elementary ship, which allows them to get more hours of time. So they stepped up to the plate and were willing to, to run additional bus runs. Our drivers are excited that field trips are back, particularly the middle school Starbase. You know, think about, it's been two years since we've really done field trips. And so the past several weeks, our middle school group got through a self-rejoire rates for Starbase. Food service, Mrs. Guinea, she does her end of the year, end of the month numbers. For the month of February, we served 18,801 meals. That is 340 more meals this year than we did last year, with one less serving day. It's pretty remarkable that these ladies and gentlemen have done an outstanding job making sure our students are fed, especially when we have supply chain issues and that we've got a last-minute change, we didn't have enough nubbits or whatever didn't come in. And so they've done a remarkable job. We also want to report that we received a supply chain assistance grant for $30,000, basically $240, that's came in on our state aid payment to help us assist with supply chain issues, additional costs that we've incurred, because it might be something that we weren't able. So congratulations to Mrs. Guinea and Mrs. Shad for coordinating getting that, those Legislation, there's a couple of things that were, were on our radar. Legislators are done as of last week, they will be on break until April 12th, so we're not going to get a budget or anything from them anytime soon. But there are two bills that last week, that were in the House, they are retirement bills. One is the, the adopted House Bill 4375, which basically says it would amend the Public School Retirement Act to allow retirees to work, return to work without any salary cap after sitting out for 12 months, basically, or earn what you made when you were a teacher. This requirement really tries to address the critical shortages that we're facing. House Bill 4375 also makes changes that you also, you have to have a bona fide retirement or termination from employees. You can't have some agreement that says, okay, I'll retire and come back, and it's got to be a bona fide split from a public school, IST, public school academy, et cetera. This bill is, has House Bill 5536 tied hard to it, which basically has the Office of Retirement Service creating three different reporting, reports for the retirees, so again, more reports coming in. There is an infrastructure bill that was passed in the late last Wednesday from the governor and the legislator, came to an agreement. There's a lot dealing, in the infrastructure bill, it deals with dedicated drinking water, high-speed internet, housing, and state local parks. About $4.7 billion in total. Of that, it's about 3.1 federal relief of, in COVID relief dollars, another almost billion dollars in federal infrastructure funds, it's a state fund. In this bill, there is, the only school-related spending item is a supplemental regarding water filtration. Jamie is currently working with custodians to identify the drinking pumps that we did not change out, so we can change those out to be possibly water filtration devices, you know, change out the old drinking pumps to more updated ones. Even the ones that we, we did back in 2014 may qualify for this. If you recall, about a year ago, they had a similar bill, but they were requiring schools and childcare to install, they're requiring them, this would be a, basically a reimbursement for this type of grant, is you replace it with your money. There's, there's a statistic in here that says that every school in childcare did, it would cost about $78 to $88 million. This supplement is $50 million of that, so it's a good chunk to have drinking pumps replace. There's a couple of bills we're watching, the Michigan merit exam, I mentioned this before, 4810 and 4811, which are remove the writing portion. It passed the House last Tuesday, and it's not going through the process. There's an entrepreneurship bill, H, House Bill 4074, which is, encourages social safety curriculums in 9th through 12th, to talk about free enterprise and entrepreneurship. We're watching that one in terms of what regulations that has. House Bill 4037 and 38, and House Bill 4538, which talks about making the work keys assessment optional, not required. That would also reduce testing time on students. Many of our students, a good chunk of our students, I don't know if you can say many, do not see value in the work keys because of the cruel path they're going down. This would then allow them not to, wouldn't require us to administer them. It also takes the, it reimburses some of the costs for students in post-secondary. There's, there's a lot of details we're going to watch in that. And then finally, there's two bills that were introduced last week. One is House Bill 5939. It amends the definition of pupil to include pupils enrolled in another district. It really deals with parents who are in the armed forces, and where they're stationed and so forth, and what district they're assigned to. And the one that I, that I'm really watching, and I know it was mentioned at the county school board association meeting, was Senate Bill 984, which was suspending the sales tax on motor fuel. There's some conversations about making fuel like food where there's no sales tax on it. We are watching this because if that does happen, that is a significant impact to the school aid fund and the monies that go towards schools. So either they'd have to find another way to raise those funds, which would mean raising taxes in the year of an election, which probably is not going to happen. Could, but we are just cautious on that one from a long-term viability of the school aid fund. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, our next item on our thing is items of interest from the board. I'll start down with Kyle, anything?
I'm good, thanks.
Danielle?
I just want to say thanks to the seven classrooms I was in last week, and kind of fun going in there, totally out of my element to do elementary, but it was still fun. And I apologize to the three that I didn't make it to because I had a last minute out of state commitment, but yeah, it was lots of fun.
Angela?
I guess I would just like to call out on any parents that would be willing to reach out to our House and Senate to try to get them motivated to settle our budget early enough for us schools to plan our budget and put a set ease before the start, start of the school year. So if you would all be willing to reach out, you have helped us in the past. So if our Richmond parents would maybe reach out to our reps, I think that would help us out much coming in the next year, so.
And their contact information is on our district website.
Thank you. Sharon?
I also just want to thank the teachers that invited me to come to read a couple weeks ago.
Okay. I have just two things on mind. On April 28th, the Macomb County School Board Association, and you guys should have received the letter, I got mine today, are having their 75th anniversary or celebrating. They're having hors d'oeuvres and dinner, and they have a guest speaker by the name of Jerry, Jerry Brooks. Heard he's really good, and he's funny, I know some people I've heard of him before.
Is that Facebook?
Yeah, Facebook is what they were saying. So I thought it'd be really nice, they're really encouraging, so maybe put that date down if possible, the 28th, and maybe majority of us went, it would be just a nice experience. It's, it's down at the IST, so it sounds like it's a good thing. I too want to thank my time, I got a thank you note in my package tonight. I had a great time reading to the elementary students, I was in two days last month, and they were great, had some really good conversations with them. The best question, how old? No. What is your date of birth? No. Not sure what they were looking for. Anyway, so that was a great time. And then one other thing, I'm asking the board to please review their calendars and send me a couple of dates in April, so that we can have a meeting, a special meeting regarding our board and superintendent relations. So if you get a chance, just take a look at your calendars and send me some. Okay? And I too ate at the cafe, by the way. I ate with Mr. Wamsley and Jamie and, oh boy. Tammy, thank you, it just like went out of my head. It was great. I had a great sandwich, had some soup, it was really, really good. So I encourage people to give it a try. Okay, next thing on our item is our action items. We're going to start with, I'm looking for a motion for the overnight approval of our trip to Spain.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight trip request to Spain during 2023 spring break as presented during the March 14, 2020 to board meeting, and outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have a second? Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the resolution to authorize bonds sale and underwriter.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and delegating the sale of bonds and other matters relating thereto as outlined in the attached resolution and documentation.
Do I have a second? Support. Any discussion?
Just to remind you, the board, this is just getting the process going. Once we sell the bonds, you will come back and have to approve that resolution once we sell the bonds, so basically two-step process.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the Teamster 214 Richmond Administrators Association contract for the '22, '23, and '23, '24 school year.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the wage increases for Teamster state, county, and municipal workers, local 214 administrators for 2021 to 22, 22, 2022 to 2023, and 2023 to 2024 school years as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support? Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval for the purchase of football helmets.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of football helmets from Riddell Speed Flex for an amount up to exceed $13,171.70 as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support? Support. Any discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Angela?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Doug? Aye. Motion carries. Being no further business, we will be adjourned at 7:45.